Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call on January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Honorable City Council, we begin the floor. If you will stand for the pleasure of a motion, followed by a motion to adjourn.
I pledge my allegiance in the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
On your agenda, approval of events, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, regular meeting events at work sessions. You had this before you. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second? Motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Snell?
Aye.
Ms. Trent?
Aye.
Motion carries on. And tonight we have the Honorable Yasmin Lee with some proclamation. Very nice to see you, ma'am.
I need all this, I need glasses now. Thank you to the mayor, council, and citizens for having me tonight. We are here to honor some great Georgians, some great citizens. I know it's hard to capture every moment, but when we can, we would like to try to do so. In our small, small part of the world that we call home, that we call Maro, every accomplishment matters. Every milestone matters. All these moments matter. It will begin with true servant Lena, pardon me, Lena LeBe. Recognizing and commending Lena LeBe. The definition of a volunteer is an individual who freely offers to take part, and the definition of service is the action of helping or doing work for someone. Every once in a while, a person comes along who has such a heart for service, who embodies selflessness and generosity, and who gives so freely of their time, effort, energy, and support, they come to be synonymous with the word volunteer. The city of Maro is fortunate enough to have such a person among those who call Maro home. Ms. LeBe. Her dedication is exemplified by her thirty-seven years of service to our country and her countless hours of community service spent at social events as emergency response support, addressing traffic control needs, blood drops, public health events, voter registration, job fairs, you name it, and more. She now serves as chairperson of Maro's Urban Redevelopment Agency, where she is working to move Maro forward with progressive decisions about quality development. While all these levels of service have helped shape our country and our community, perhaps no greater gift has been given than the services she extends to her friends, neighbors, and family. Whereas, whether it's touching the life of a friend, maybe a hand to a neighbor, or caring, what happens to people? It seems that giving is her nature. This life of service may be a burden for some, but for her, it seems to only deepen her joy and affirm what she is committed to, a true heart of service. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives that the members of this body recognize and commend Ms. LeBe for her innumerable works on behalf of her fellow citizens, and extend the most sincere best wishes for many more years of health and happiness. Ms. LeBe. Recognizing and commending Jenny Nguyen and for other purposes. Whereas Jenny Nguyen took the oath and became the city of Maro's first woman judge of Vietnamese-American descent on February ninth, two thousand twenty-one. A legal professional with many years of experience and formal education. Judge Nguyen specializes in real estate law and closings, family law and bankruptcy, and immigration law, especially deportation proceedings, and she's a dedicated member of her community. She has further served as president of the Georgia Vietnamese-American Chamber of Commerce and founding president of the Vietnamese-American Bar Association of Georgia. Judge Nguyen has also been recognized as one of Georgia's, as one of Georgian-Ajin Times' twenty-five most influential Asian-Americans, which stands as an additional testament to her dedication to career excellence. She is an honest and dedicated public service, public service who strives for excellence in all of her endeavors and whose primary concern is the proper application of law. Judge Nguyen has served with honor and distinction since her appointment, and her vision and unyielding commitment to judiciary excellence has set the standard of public service. It is abundantly fitting and proper that the outstanding accomplishments of this remarkable and distinguished Georgian be appropriately recognized. Ms. Jenny Nguyen. And last, and certainly not least, commending Ethan Bam. On July twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, Ethan Bam was appointed unanimously to serve as Associate Legalistful Judge by the Maro City Council, becoming the first, the city's first Vietnamese-American judge. A graduate of John Marshall Law School, Judge Bam is the third Vietnamese-American judge in Georgia, the first appointed Vietnamese-American judge in Georgia, the first Asian-American judge in Clayton County, and the first immigrant Vietnamese-American judge in Georgia. Alongside his service as judge, he has worked as congressional legislative intern, as well as a legal assistant for the Clayton County Solicitor's Office and the Clayton County District Attorney's Office. He is active, he is active in going at county politics and balancing against scammers who seek to take advantage of immigrants, dedicating much of his time and energy to the role being of others. Judge Bam's significant organizational and leadership talents, remarkable patience and diplomacy, keenness of vision, and sensitivity to the needs of citizens of the state have earned him the respect and admiration of his colleagues and associates. He is an honest and dedicated public servant who strives for excellence in all of his endeavors and whose primary concern is the proper application of the law. Whereas, it is abundantly fitting and proper that the outstanding accomplishments of this remarkable and distinguished Georgian be appropriately recognized. Judge Ethan Bam. Thank you to the council, thank you to the mayor. It's an honor to definitely recognize citizens in this city, and I'm looking forward to doing more, so we'll do that. Alright, thank you.
That's fantastic.
Mayor.
Ballot, Mr. Obama.
I want to thank Representative Neal. She is a dedicated legislator who worked tirelessly for Maro, District Seventy-four, and for residents in Clayton County. We always like to see local legislators really digging deep. She rolled up her sleeves, so we really appreciate the time that she spends in the city, as a significant amount of time. And many see her around, so that's always a sign of great leadership. Thank you.
To your pocketable issues, she's leading our legislation for your home state exemption, so thank her all the way out. Will a lot of comments, will, 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 uh, have a, Captain James Flynn has a twenty-year service. That sounds like a long time.
Yeah, it was good.
Hey, it's, it's been a long time.
Well, I like that.
Just like that.
Reading the mayor and council, it gives me a great pleasure tonight to honor Captain James Flynn, Jim, as we call him, for twenty years of dedicated service to the city. Jim exemplifies a public servant. He gives from the heart. I can think of no better profession for him to serve than as a firefighter. He really goes above and beyond what he's called to do, to serve our citizens, our businesses. His coworkers back here think they have very little respect for him, and he kind of has to say.
Misfit.
Yeah, misfit, yeah. But he is a great firefighter, a great leader, and we're just so pleased that he chose Maro to serve the last twenty years. So, I've got a twenty-year pen for you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. I need business approval of staff recommendation to upgrade the audio and visual equipment. We ordered an estimated cost of eleven hundred for a seventy-five inch TV mount to replace the pull-down screen, three thousand for a Logitech four K video conference kit, five hundred for connection. The total is going to be five thousand six hundred dollars from spots authorized by the mayor to execute in contract related documents as we heard in the work session. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Snell?
Aye.
Ms. Trent?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
And Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Motion carries on. I would see approval of the amended contract with order works to increase employees' pay rate from fifteen dollars an hour to sixteen dollars an hour, and authorized by the mayor to execute the contract in related documents. You had that forty, there are motions to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Trent?
Aye.
Ms. Snell?
Aye.
Motion carries on. Approval of the twenty-twenty-two budget implementations with optimization specifics of the mayor and council regarding salary line numbers containing that FY twenty-two budget with an implementation timeline occurring after motion review and approval by the city council and authorized by the mayor to execute in agreement related documents. You had it before you. Have some discussions. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded, discussion. Do I hear that? Go ahead.
So, this item is for the salary increasing, and we already have the salary studies done. And I don't see the reason why don't we, as a council, have the amount of how much the increasing of the salary adjustment will be in this motion that we are pulling for. So we understand that what is the impact to our budget. Because by the end of the day, we want to support, we want to give the salary, give the raise to the employee, to pay them fair, to make, if you could, we want to pay them well, so they will be happy to come to work and be more productive. And in return, they will do provide a better service to public. But for the council, just quietly say approval for the budget implementation without knowing how much is the amount of the salary would be, so we don't know what we're doing here. We have the salary studied already. Why can't we have the number aligned with this, this decision?
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking to see the manager to get the council to the council.
Ms. Snell?
We are currently assessing that, as we've previously discussed. So it's not the, as far as revenue numbers and the actual increase and how to best implement that across the board or individually, is what we're trying to assess. And this has to do with something that was passed in the budget last year that was going to be implemented in, in January, which would be this month, and this is just a delay of that two-point-six percent increase, which would probably benefit the employees because it will probably be a number higher than two-point-six percent than we're able to, to push through later on.
Thank you for the piece of information, but let's say if we need to retro the salary, we can, and we also way have the, we have the number to know what, what are we doing? And to evaluate how much is the revenue that we have in, and how much is the fair market count there for us to, and the council to do our job, to evaluate how much our income, how much our revenue, versus how much it costs us to do the salary adjustment. What if we can afford a little bit more than the salary study shows us? Or what if our revenue is limited to a certain pay, we have to be, um, my concern is that we, since we don't have any number in hand, and this, the way this motion is, motion is written, the council is going to vote for something to possibly to cost more in budget, but we don't know how much the cost would be. I would say we should defer this until we get a closer number and to respond to the concern that, okay, the time has passed, we always able to retro the salary. So, and that's my thought, and I would like to hear the thought from my council fellow who is going to vote for this motion tonight.
Any other questions?
Um, for discussion, so the purpose of expanding the language of the motion is to make it clear that implementation wouldn't occur until after budget, budget review, and it's approved by the city council. So this isn't approving something in advance. This is stating that we're going to review the budget, go over the items, review the salary study, take a look at it. To your point, there may be an opportunity to pay higher than the two-point-six percent previously budgeted, but it's going to go back to approval before the city council, so it won't be, this is our ability to delay the process so that we can review the budget and discuss the salaries.
Other comments? Here you go. Motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Snell?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Trent?
Aye.
Motion carries on. Second reading of the ordinance, twenty-two dash one, home state exemption legislation. We've had that before us, and this will change our home state exemption. Hopefully this board will save that side of the law, but they'll hold back by the vendors of the community from sixty thousand to eighty thousand. You had that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Snell?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Trent?
Aye.
Motion carries on. First reading, ordinance twenty-two dash two, makes use zone, uh, moratorium. That is one of the zone classifications in the city. We do believe we need some review on that item, and it is a first reading. It'll also be published in a local newspaper shortly, and we will be back sometime February for the second reading. As stated earlier, we'll have two items in executive session, but we've had some really good proclamations tonight as well as Captain Flynn, so we will take general comments from the full.
I don't know how y'all always sneaks up in behind, but, but you know, it's my, my great honor. From being in the military, active duty thirty-one years, I believe that your country is what you, to survive, you have to work hard, you have to give of yourself for the people of this country, because many have, have bled for us, many. Today, those firefighters that, that died in, I think it was Pennsylvania or New York, uh, police officers, um, you know, from Texas to California, New York. I mean, we're, we're really in bad, bad straits now, so I just can't give you enough credit, knowing every day that when you go to work, whether you're a police officer or firefighter, you're going there to put your life on the line. You know, I've sent many, many soldiers, got them ready to go to battle, and knew many of them that lost their lives. But it's for our children that are coming up now that we do this. If we don't give our children, our youth, the example to live by, then this country is gone. So we just have to keep working, working together, and we're going to get through this. No matter what happens, we're going to survive. But thank you, thank you for that. It was a surprise, but thank you so much.
Judge, Judge and Judge, you can be a few.
Well, I want to obviously thank mayor and council again and representative for this great honor. It's definitely a pleasant surprise. I didn't know about this until a few days ago. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your judge in this great city. I grew up in Maro, so it's always an honor to come back and to be able to serve. And again, just thank you for the opportunity.
If I may, Ms. LeBe, thank you so much for your wonderful speech. My brother served in the military, and you know, thank you for your service in the Navy. As most of you all may know, Jenny and I grew up in Vietnam, we were born in Vietnam, came here, I came here when I was eleven. Jenny was about nine, ten years old when she, when she came. Her dad and my dad fought for the American military during the Vietnam War and were imprisoned after the war. And so, and when they got out, they did the paperwork to get us to America. And, you know, we came here with nothing but the clothes on our backs. My parents, like Jenny's parents, worked hard, you know, working two jobs each, washing dishes at a local restaurant to support the family. And, you know, this country's given us all the opportunities to make a better life for ourselves. We have our own law firm, our own practice. We have a law firm right across the street. And we recently celebrated our fifth anniversary, a couple of months ago, a month or so ago. And we started out with four employees, myself and Jenny and two paralegals, and now we're up to twenty-two employees in five years. And we get to serve on the bench for this wonderful city. It's a testament to how amazing our country is. And I want to piggyback off of Ms. LeBe's statement about the service members. You all make this country amazing. And, you know, that's what Jenny and I think about every single day. How do I, how do we give back to this country, to pay it forward, to make it even better for, for ourselves and for our neighbors, our friends, and our posterity, our kids and grandkids. We're honored to be here today, and, you know, we're honored to have received this recognition from the state legislature. Thank you, representative. Thank you, mayor and council, for hosting us tonight, and we're honored to be here. Happy to do it.
Other comments?
I do, but you probably want to dismiss them because my challenge is with you guys. I'm just concerned, first let me say, I don't want to put down our code enforcement at all. He's doing a fabulous job. I'm very proud of Victor. And, but I do have some concerns about some code issues. I feel like it's something that, as a council, you can do something about so Victor doesn't have to work as hard as he is. You know, I'm all about the trees. I'm a tree hugger, and that's the only thing that we have in this city that is old, and we need to keep it because it is environmentally good for our city. You know, it produces oxygen, and with an interstate and airport, we need every bit we can get here. Another thing, it's, I've got some pictures I want to share with you about a house in the neighborhood that is, is ridiculous looking, what's been going on, because it wasn't made clear to the person that did the work that they couldn't do that. You know, but if you look around the city and you see how nice the other houses look, when you see something like that, other people start thinking they can do those things too. And we just don't want to just let it go, because pretty soon, if you let things go and you keep letting it go, all your people that follow the rules are going to be gone. So we have to keep a good look to our city, as well as our trees, and just make sure that we do things so that people know the rules before they sign that contract, whether it's a rent or an owner, and that's just my feelings.
Thank you. Other comments? All good. Comments from the city council? Ms. Snell?
Thank you, Lena, for being such a wonderful, wonderful person in my village. I really appreciate who you are. You're special. You really are, and I appreciate everything that you do for the city. Jenny and Ethan, thank you. The friendship that I have had the opportunity to have with you all has been very special to me, and I appreciate you all for who you all are as people. You all work with excellence, and that's inspiring, so I appreciate you all. Representative Neal, thank you for taking the time to honor Maro's own and the work that you do to help support the city. I really appreciate that. Fleming?
Man. Right.
Don't forget Ms. Flynn.
Yeah.
Couldn't have done without her.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. But thank you all. Please fire. You all have a special moment. We appreciate you all, so that's, that's all I got.
Ms. Trent?
First of all, I am so glad that we have an unanimous vote on the home state exemption and as to where we can show the state representative, we are the mayor and council, how much that we want it to happen, and I'm quite glad that State Representative that's up in the news here across town, and she saw that, and hopefully we can hope for us to have this pass. And we have wonderful proclamation tonight for the citizen and LeBe and two justice that currently serve Maro, from used to serve Maro Justice. And I am no different than you are. I immigrated to this country fifteen years ago, and I call it spoon, because I have so much opportunity and freedom in this country that I've ever had if I brought, if I still stay where I was born. And I appreciate, and we all turn around and try to give back to this, this country for what have been given to us. So, and thank you for that. So tonight is a special night, congratulations on that, and tonight is a special night, it's a great honor to the Vietnamese-American people, and thank you. For the plan, thank you for your service, and I hope to see you for so many years you serve. Thank you.
Ms. Qua?
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to the plan. The rest of the, our department and police department are our, our, of course, responsible. You know, I always appreciate what you give. Thank you so much. And, Mr. LeBe, thank you, what you give, what you done, you know, for many, many years in the, in the service and what you give us in the city. And to Jenny and Ethan, we are really proud of you. We are, we have to pick you because of your capability and your character, but we also proud of you that, that come with the package that you was like the first Asian, whatever, judge, and first Asian, you know, that's not come with the package, but I'm really proud of you that you, that you and your, help that and your, the all young people, Asian, especially the Vietnamese people who've been here that long, and look them to, to serve the community, to serve the community. And thank you, great opportunity to come on tonight. And thank you, for having to come on tonight, do great things. Thank you very much.
Ms. Dean?
I'd like to first say thank you to Jenny and Ethan, long time relationship. The city has benefited very much for having to be involved with the city government and the city as well. And I'd like to say thank you to both of you. Representative Neal, what can I say? You know, for you to come and honor us and present these recognitions to our citizens and businesses, thank you so much. And I know that we'll be seeing more of you. And thank you so much. Captain, what can I say?
Not much.
I still have, that's too late. And I'd like to all of our first responders, you know, you all are family. We wouldn't be Morrow without you. So thank you so much for all that you do. And I know you're here for us, and we're there for you.
Excellent. The best is where you're.
I don't want to use the right name, I couldn't correct it, but I'm still. Lana LeBeck. We're going to have Lana LeBeck classes starting soon. I'd like for everyone to sign up and take Lana LeBeck classes and tell you how, as humans, you know, we should be. Love you.
Yeah, the best is where the people are just great, are trailblazers in some form or fashion. Either the police department, when things are going horribly right or horribly wrong, or firefighters, who might be who saved your life. The military has your back. And when you set up judicial appointments, none of that comes easy. Comes with a lot of trust. Look for a balanced system, and that's difficult in those spots. And the same with political, so these you've done a great job. And we appreciate you very much. Thank you, Captain. Hopefully we can say at least another ten, that would be nice. As stated earlier, we've got an executive session. Really can't say how long it'll last, but this is assumed somewhere in our third generation. But we do appreciate you coming out and adhering to an executive session.